I'd like to call on the regular meeting of the Amherst Board of Education order, please. Let's move this.
............................................................
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yakobozie?
Here.
Mr. Zappa?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mrs. Snyder?
Here.
Entertaining motion. What are we doing here? Without the agenda as presented with any other dynamics?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozie?
Aye. These are recommendations to appoint a board member to delegate in an alternate to the Amherst Schools Annual Business Meeting in the House School Board Association to be held on January, excuse me, November 8th.
Mr. Zappa?
I am second.
He's our delegate, who's our alternate?
Teresa.
Thank you. This does not require a motion, it's mere recommendations, and I assume the two board members just accept it, it's a little more than too long.
Yes.
All right? Thank you.
Since we made a motion, Mr. Yakobozie, let's go ahead and...
You want to do it that way?
And go on. I think that's the way we've always handled it in the past.
Okay, so the motion then is by...
Mrs. Snyder?
Mrs. Snyder to recommend Mark...
Mr. Zappa?
And...
Second, like, Teresa.
Because the alternate, Teresa, sectioned out, she seconded that whole sentence, so we would vote on that first.
Just do it all on the...
Okay, then the alternate was Teresa by, I think, delegate again.
Second, my...
Didn't recsecond it, but he did.
No, I see how you see it. He did, but I think all one motion.
Okay, so for any fluid discussion? If not, roll call.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozie?
Aye. So the hearing of the public. Public participation section of the Board of Education's agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments and or concerns. The board welcomes and appreciates your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, please consider the following. First, your comments should be factual, respectful of the rights of others. Second, before addressing the board with a specific problem, it is the board's hope to have first addressed the problem with an appropriate teacher, staff member, or news maker. Individual statements should be not exceed five minutes, and the total time shall be a maximum of 30 minutes. We have two folks who wish to speak to the board. First is Reverend Kurt Walker. Reverend?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, my name is Reverend Kurt Walker. I'm a parent alone, my wife Reverend Jennifer Walker, knowing of our son Isaac Walker, who will be entering the seventh grade at AJH this year. Pray for us. First of all, I want to praise the staff and administration on the marvelous job they've done over the last 18 months protecting the health of our children. I applaud your efforts. The professionalism of the teachers and their compassion for continuing to teach our children under the most challenging circumstances of this pandemic are commendable. Thank you. I come today to ask two questions and offer my support. First, what is your plan and policy for making sure that the choices that parents and their children have made regarding vaccination and masking are respected? As we are painfully aware, a public health issue, the COVID-19 pandemic, has become politicized, causing real and potential conflict between those who have chosen or not chosen to be vaccinated or masked. I want to be assured that the district's current policy on zero tolerance on bullying will be applied to any instances where children are intimidated for wearing or not wearing masks. Same for vaccinations. Sharing such a statement by the school administration that decisions by parents and teachers on vaccinations and masking should be respected would be most proactive, in my opinion. Second, I wanted to clarify the district's policy on staff being vaccinated. Are all staff coming in contact with children required to be vaccinated? If not, what are the protocols in place to protect those who are vaccinated from those who are not vaccinated? I understand that no COVID testing screening will be regularly done by the LEA. So it seems logical to assume that undetected virus shedding could be circulating at some point in any or all the school buildings. Finally, I want to state that if later on in the school year, the Board of Education decides in consultation with the Health Department to require masks in school buildings or buses in order to protect the health of our children and of our staff, I am in full support of that, and would do everything I could to add my voice to others that would support the Board of Education in that decision. Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to hearing the answers to my questions. The first, of course, being the bullying policy, and the second being what the current policy is on the vaccination of all staff within the district and protocols to minimize transmission. Again, thank you for your dedication and service to our children, and a deep appreciation to teachers and staff of the Amherst Exponent Village School District. You all continue to be in my prayers, along with parents and children in our community.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll get back with him. Ready, want to answer him now?
Sure, I mean, I can speak to a couple of things if the board wishes me to respond. We, in regards to the first question, as far as the bullying policy, we have already discussed as an administrative team that, obviously, across the district, we want to make sure that, you know, everyone's decision with the masking, whether to wear a mask or not, is respected, and our administrators and staff will be on the lookout to, in fact, make sure that those individual decisions are respected and everybody is treated the way they need to be treated and the way they deserve to be treated, because, obviously, we want all of our students to make sure that they're comfortable in the school and having a good, positive school experience. So that has already been discussed, and, in fact, I've had a couple of parents that have reached out to me with a similar question, and, again, reassure them that, you know, if there's any questions or concerns as we get into the school year, to make sure those questions first are directed to the teacher and into the building principal, and then certainly to us at Central Office, and we will follow up on those, you know, issues just as quickly as we can. In regards to the vaccination, we don't know which of our staff employees are vaccinated and which are not. Those are private medical health decisions, and we don't track, we don't have that information. But what I can tell you is, in conversations with Dave Koval, Lorain County Public Health Commissioner, he has indicated that the vaccination rate among school staff in Lorain County is right around 90%. Again, that's across the county, so hopefully that will provide some reassurance. And then, I think, the third, the third question... It wasn't a third question, it was just a statement of support. Oh, okay. That if, that if we do not know what this variant or any other variants might, that come about, might cause in terms of increase, and if at some point the Health Department does counsel the board... Yes. For mandatory masking, and, I mean, we all know this, we see this across the country, that unfortunately people are not being civil in their conversations regarding masking or not masking or vaccinating. And I just wanted to state to this board that I, for one, in anything I can do, if the board decided to take that step, I understand, you live in the community, I understand that if at some point the board, the Health Department decided that, yes, this would be proven to protect not only the children's health, but staff's health, and you decided to do this, that this could be a significant impact on your lives, and I just wanted to offer my support to you all. Well, thank you for that, and please be reassured that we communicate regularly with Lorain County Health Commissioner, as we did last year, and you had mentioned some things, and I appreciate your comments at the outset, because it's with our staff, it's because of our staff and the folks that we're blessed to have here in Amherst, coming together the way everybody did last year, that we were able to work through this pandemic in a way, I think, that no one else in Lorain County was able to. And it's really a credit to our staff, to our parents, to our students, to our community, the way we were able to come together and work through this, and we want to continue to move forward in the same direction. We rely a tremendous amount on the guidance of our Lorain County Health Commissioner, and we talk a lot as Lorain County Superintendent's, and unlike last year, last year we had a mask mandate, you know, this year, at this point, we don't. I think 12 of the 14 districts in Lorain County are approaching it very much the way we are, leaving that decision up to parents with a caveat that things may change as we have our meetings, as the school year unfolds. We know we may have to adjust and adapt and make changes as needed, so please be reassured that we're in communication with Dave Koval, and he, in turn, with the Ohio Department of Health, and that's where we look for our guidance, and at any time, my cell phone's on the website, feel free to give me a call on my cellphone, my email, send me an email anytime, and, as I say, I will follow up just as quickly as I can. I hope that helps. Thank you. Have you given any thought to my first statement, the idea of being proactive, and I've read all the information you put out ahead of time emphasizing that it's parent and child choice in terms of the mask mandate, and I appreciate that, you're being very open and transparent, absolutely, especially in something that can certainly become a hotbed of conflict. Have you given any thought to stating proactively that the decision on the part of parents is respected and that this kind of dovetails with our, the schools know, zero tolerance of bullying, is making that statement clear? Absolutely, I can easily incorporate, as we started last year and want to continue this year, we, at least, at a minimum, weekly email updates every Friday, and that can easily be incorporated into an update just as a reminder, you know, that we want to make sure that we're respectful of those that have different opinions and perspectives, and I think that's a great idea, and I would be happy to incorporate that. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Reverend. Cindy Clonk?
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Cindy, and my husband Ron, and we are trying to be more involved in the community, more active than... I understand that the Ohio State Department passed Resolution 20, and I know that deals with the schools, and I'm just curious to see how the Amherst schools are going to implement that in their curriculum this year.
When you...
Resolution 20. It was passed in July of 2020 last year.
And is that in regards to the CR, Critical Race Theory?
It was, it's on the website, and I went to the Ohio Department, and I read it, and I've gone to other meetings, and you hear it all on TV, how they are implementing it, and I know Amherst is a great school system, and you have graduated, you know, top of the line, and I know this has kind of crept in now, as an addition, you know, besides teaching the hardcore stuff, now you have to also implement this, so I'm just wondering how you also are going to implement this item into the agenda for Amherst schools.
Yeah, Critical Race Theory is currently not in our curriculum, and it's not a part of our curriculum here in Amherst, and I know Mr. Mulmar, our Assistant Superintendent oversees our teaching and learning, you know, he can speak to the details in terms of what it is we teach as it relates to the standards and how we approach that process.
But don't you have to teach it? As my understanding, every school has to have it implemented, I mean, that's the way that I read it on the website, that the schools have to implement it somehow into their curriculum.
That's not our understanding. It is not currently, again, correct, Mr. Mulmar, it is not currently in the Ohio State Teaching Standards, and we teach the Ohio State, Ohio Department of Education Teaching Standards, and it's currently not a part of the standards.
Anyway, just school...
Yeah, correct, it's not currently part of the Ohio Learning Standards, and as Trudy Spencer says, that is what our curriculum is, so we follow that, and therefore, the textbook resources that we have are aligned to those standards, so currently we don't have any curriculum materials that are aligned to Critical Race Theory, and until that, until the standards change, until it becomes part of the official standards, that we don't have that currently right now.
And maybe, then what is this about, then, that Ohio Department of Education came out with? What was that, Resolution 20, then? Your understanding?
I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, so I have to take some more research on the official language of that and get back to you on that. Let me just tell you where we are right now, is we don't have that in our curriculum.
All right.
And the reason it's not in our curriculum is because it's not in the state standards.
I was just curious, because, like I said, you know, I read the standard, well, the Department of Education yesterday, and they gave three pages of what they are trying to push into each school that is dealing with hiring practices, staff implementation, and I was thinking that this was something that Ohio was pushing, and that the schools, because the meeting I went to, some schools have already adopted it. I mean, do you remember, there were some schools that were already adopting the program?
Yes, the schools have the ability to adopt, you know, the curriculum, obviously, they want to teach in their school districts, but again, our understanding is that that is, Critical Race Theory is not in the Ohio State Standards, and it's not, has not been a part of our curriculum, and is not a part of our curriculum at this time.
Aye, thank you.
We have her phone number here and an email, perhaps, if you could research it and answer the question to her, and copy all of the receipt. We'll do.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would encourage to, again, I know Mr. Mulmar's email was on the website, and our contact information is on the website, and we are in regular communication with various associations, other superintendents, other superintendents, assistant superintendents, superintendents, curriculum directors across Ohio, and, you know, we haven't received some of the information that you're citing here today, but at any time, if you have any questions or concerns, you don't have to wait for a board meeting, feel free to give us a call or email at any time.
Well, I will do that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Uvayal?
Good evening. I just wanted to let the board know that I took part and presented in an online OASBO presentation last week. OASBO is my professional organization, and what we were doing was, three different school districts, treasurer CFOs, from a large district, medium district, and a small district, were presenting to more treasurers what our monthly financial communications were to the board. And we have a lot of similarities in what we do, and there were other reports that were presented to the board each month in their financials. So there were a couple of changes this month, and you'll really see the changes for the August financials. One of our, one of my colleagues was talking about branding, and he happens to be the treasurer CFO from Brunswick City Schools, and Mark is a 30-year veteran of the treasurer CFO field, and he talked about the pride in the Brunswick community, and everywhere you look, there's a B for Brunswick, you know, a blue B. So I decided that I need to do a better job of doing branding on our monthly financials. So you'll see some added to the July financials, and I'll have that perfected for the August financials. So I think that's important, and Mr. Papera was really right, it shows an additional amount of pride, I think, in our community and our comment logo. And then the other thing is, you'll notice that for the July financials, I added a checklist in. And some districts do it, we did it in my prior district, and hadn't added that into our monthly financials in the three years I've been here, so I thought it might be a really good thing, and you'll notice on the monthly checklist, it was three pages this month, and it lists the check number, the vendor name, the check amount, the check date, and some type of description, whether it was pulled from the invoice number field or purchase order description or what have you. And then the top part of it, the top part of the report, about 10 lines, are electronic checks, and they're mostly things like payments to STRS, SDRS, which are our retirement systems in the state. So I just wanted to bring attention to that. It's interesting, it's in the interest of full disclosure, and it's also in the interest of providing a document that the auditors are likely going to ask for anyways. So if it's provided in the monthly financial packet, then it's already there, it's already accessible, and just to know that many public entities in the state of Ohio belong to the Treasurer of State's Ohio Checkbook Program, where every check room, all of the checks that have been issued are uploaded to this basic site from the Treasurer of State's office, and it's all there for everyone's. So in the interest of full disclosure, transparency, I've added that report. Would you like me to move on to my recommendations?
Please.
So this evening, item A is the board minutes for the July 26th regular board meeting. Item B are the monthly financials for the month of July, including a charter conciliation, a financial summary, the monthly financial report for Fund 001, General Fund, and the Emergency Fund, Fund 016, and then you'll see, and item D is the new checklist in. Item C, we ask that the board approves supplemental appropriations for two different funds, Commons Live and the NORD Principal Account. The NORD Principal Account is for the grant that they received, the Community Health Investment Grant that NORD receives for $10,522 for new playground equipment. Mrs. Givernazzo applied for that last spring and received it. Item D, you'll notice a fund-to-fund transfer from the General Fund to the 309001 Commons Live Fund. What that represents is a $7,500 donation that was received last year from NORD's support to be used for discretionary spending at Mr. Crusaker's discretion. And since the Commons Live Fund is trying to get up and running, we decided to move that $7,500 from last year's receipt, as well as the $7,500 we're receiving this year, and we're receiving right into the Commons Live Fund. That gives them a good little message to get their business going. Item E is a designation that the treasurer CFO is the designated records custodian. It's always been that the treasurer CFO is the secretary to the board, so it was always inferred that the treasurer CFO was the designated records custodian, but the auditors asked for it last year. So Steve and I talked it over and thought we might as well designate the treasurer CFO as such, and then what we'll do is we'll move that to the January organization meeting. Each year, we'll just make it one of the standing resolutions. Item F is an FDIC, Federal Depository Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation requirement that we have a designated custodian at each public entity for the funds that are transacted at their financial institutions. So KeyBank requested that we produce that, and we thought that it would be a really wise idea for the board to acknowledge it. That also will become an organization meeting, standing resolution. Item G, but this is not a new requirement, Ohio Revised Code, Section 135.142, has long since said that the financial, the CFO of the entity must provide information on the income earned from bankers' acceptances and commercial paper, as well as a listing of purchases and sales of same. It's something that the auditors have asked about in a number of recent audits, so our financial advisory, Redtree, suggested that we produce this. It must be produced and acknowledgement of such be uploaded to the Department of Education each August. And then item H, typical, you see the bottom of the region. Are there any questions?
I didn't do it to the next one, it was different. I like pronouncing it.
And I would agree. Good.
We used to get the check, right? Yeah, we did.
Did you?
Yes, we did.
Was it a time when we could not invest in commercial papers, was it 30 years ago?
Yes, but the board policy has included commercial paper as an investment instrument that is approved, and I have additional CPAM training through the Treasurer of State to invest in commercial paper. And then I also have some additional hours, two hours this summer, that just last week that I obtained in order to invest in these securities. So both board policy has to state that it's an approved instrument, and the treasurer CFO must have that specific training through CPAM.
They still collateralize in the CPs?
I would have to ask that question to Redtree.
I'd be curious what they would do, using for collateral, so that's a, it's a riskier investment, the return's better, is it not?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe commercial paper also is a factor 12-month investment.
It's relatively short-term?
Yes. And none of our public funds can be invested for a term longer than five years, so of course, our advisory entity would keep really close eyes on, I send here, I would cash those statements, and scrutinizes the forecast, five-year forecast with me, see when our dips and peaks are and cash on hand.
The vast majority of our investments are collateralized anyway, so the risk is minimal.
We always have a healthy stomach, Star Ohio, which is zero risk as well, zero risk in our general balance with our depository as well.
Any questions, Raimi? If not, entertain the motion and recommendation, A through H.
So we...
So board. Okay, I heard this one first and this one second.
That's fine.
This one? Motion, second.
Okay.
Is there a discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye. I thought it was Mark.
Oh, and I heard multiple voices, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right. Let me change my record here. So Mrs. Snyder? Aye. Mr. Zappa? Miss, Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
All right, and Mr. Yakobozie?
Thank you. Mr. Sayers?
Thank you, Mr. Yakobozie. A few items here. First of all, a quick update, enrollment is something that we're checking almost every day, and I can tell you that as of this morning, our new registrations are running ahead of where they were last year on the very same date. So as you're aware, we're in the process of getting an enrollment update and 10-year projection done, that should be completed, we should have a report for our September board meeting, so that'll be interesting to take a look at, but looking back to the exact same date last summer versus where we're at this year, we are running ahead of our new registrations, and it seems to be fairly evenly distributed across grade levels. There's no really one grade level that really stands out more than the others, so it's a fairly even distribution, so I wanted the board to be aware of that. Big topic of discussion, as the board is aware, construction update. We did have a meeting this morning, Mr. Mulmar, myself, Mr. Grimmon, our Buildings and Ground Supervisor, TIA4 Transportation, Officer Bowers there, our School Resource Officer, Mark Cawthon from the Police Department, two representatives from the Fire Department, Brandon Mottia was there, as well as the Fire Chief, and then Mayor Costwell was here. So we had a big meeting this morning, and the Amherst Police Department has a traffic plant in place. Mylan Avenue will not be open and will not be ready for the start of school on Thursday. We don't have a completion date, could be a week, could be two weeks, could be three weeks, really up in the air at this point as far as that Mylan Avenue. So there will be some additional officers, there will be some directing of traffic. TIA has done an excellent job of trying to reroute 90% of our buses through five points to the south, Middle Ridge, and then up South Lake Street, so that the buses can enter from the south, which will keep the bus traffic, hopefully, away from most of the car traffic here on North Lake and West Martin and East Martin. So having said that, though, it is, there's going to be some congestion, and we're going to have to work through some things in that regard with that particular shutdown there on Mylan Avenue. on Mylan Avenue. In addition to that, we also have this work on Washington that the city is indicating that they're hoping to have it open. It will not be completed, but they're hoping to have it open by Thursday. Obviously, this is a main thoroughfare here as well, so hopefully that will be ready to go. We did also become aware of a couple of other projects. I know Sunrise are doing some work down there, I think North Maine, from what I understand. I just heard, actually, South Maine, that there was some work being done, is it South Maine? Earlier today, I think, on South Maine. So a lot of construction happening in the city, and we're hoping that most of it will be addressed by Thursday. But everybody's working together to try to make the best of the situation. So we've included that in our email updates, we're trying to encourage carpooling, riding the bus, walking to school if that's an option. So again, trying to minimize the car traffic as much as we possibly can. So again, as we've done with other things, it's just one of those things where we try to pull together and do the best we can to kind of work with adversity. And I think by everyone working together, we'll be able to get through. It won't be easy, but we'll be able to work our way through it.
We got no, I mean, didn't it say by October 1st?
For Mylan? No, the indication was that it could be a week, could be two weeks, could be three weeks, which would put us right around Labor Day. But it's still very much up in the air. That's actually a county project, as I understand it. The Mylan Avenue project is a county project, but the city is trying to expedite things. And Mayor Costello is keeping me posted. Obviously, we're working closely with the Police Department as far as traffic and that kind of thing goes. So, but again, I just want the board to be aware that the first several days are going to be a challenge. And our principals were very flexible in terms of working with tardies and just being flexible and patient and working through those things. It's just going to take a few days before we get the times kind of worked out and we have to adjust and figure out maybe we have to open the doors a little bit earlier in the morning, or what we need to do, or adjust routes, or add routes. Those are things that we'll just have to work through those first few days. As you're aware, even under normal circumstances, the first couple of days is oftentimes a challenge. So this year will be even more so. But again, with our folks and we appreciate obviously the efforts of the Fire Department, the Police Department, they're just doing the best they can with it as well. So I wanted the board to be aware of that. Just a couple of things real quick. I just wanted to commend our summer staff. So much happens, a lot of people just think of school as shutting down at the end of May. And as we know, there's a lot that happens in the summer. Construction projects, concreting, parking lots, getting buses ready. We've got 40 buses that have passed inspection, custodians, cleaning the building, maintenance work, those kinds of things. And our summer staff have really done a good job because what's happened in light of this whole COVID thing is that there's delays in the supply chain. And we, the board approved a truck purchase, I think it was in February or March, and Chuck got word the other day that we'll be likely to get it by December. So this is happening with many different orders that we've placed, that just the timing of things just is not what it normally is. So our summer folks have just been extra, you know, extra good this year in terms of adjusting, adapting. We've got some classroom furniture we're waiting on over at NOR, we're making the best with what we have. So I just wanted to commend our summer staff because they just, when nobody knows, when it seems like schools have been shut down. There's our tech department, they've been busy, all of our teachers have been issuing new laptops that was made possible through our SRR3 funding, so our tech guys distributing Chromebooks, I mean, the list just goes on and on. So I did want to mention that. And then the last thing I wanted to say is our staff is ready to go. I was over at Powers the other day, we were talking, actually ran into it, the entire first grade team was in, the whole team was in. And they were just in, they just could not wait. They said, "We can't wait to see our students, this is going to be awesome, can't wait to get the year started." And there's always a lot of enthusiasm, but it seems like this year it's even ramped up even another notch. I was over at NOR today and ran into a couple of teachers and just the rooms, I mean, they looked great and just doing a great, great job. I heard comments about, "I just can't wait to be at the football stadium and see the team and hear the band and all that." And it's just neat to see that energy. And so again, I think everybody's hoping for some normalcy and we'll see what happens, but it's so, so good to see that enthusiasm. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sayers?
Yeah. So we're routing the buses in through Powers, coming from the south. What are we doing with the drop-off people?
The car riders? The only change actually, the Powers process will be the same because typically their buses come in from Lake and then they pick up in that parking lot to the south of the building. And then the cars come in off of Mylan and then park in that big lot there between the junior high and Powers. So the Powers, the process itself actually is not changing. Now, junior high, we flipped it. Typically, the cars come in from South Lake, the buses come in from Mylan. But in an attempt to keep the buses away from Mylan and South, or North Lake, we're bringing them in through South Lake, through the driveway there along the side of Powers, up into that lot, dropping off, and they'll loop around and go back out. And then the cars will then come in off of Mylan, go through the loop in front of the junior high, loop back out. And so again, the hope is, working with the Police Department, where we know we're going to have our most congestion, we're hoping to keep that cars as much as possible. Now, there will be a couple of buses that will have to come through that way, you know, if they're coming in from the Apple Orchard area, depending where they're coming from. But other than the junior high flip-flop in terms of which way they're coming in, the procedure of Powers is just the same. But we'll just have to see how long it's going to take to go around and then coming from the south. We may have to tweak our times a little bit.
So I'm assuming you'll have officers of some description directing the traffic at Mylan and South Lake?
Yes, and also a big intersection. It's my understanding, I think, like you were there, also at West Martin, the freeway there is an area where things get really.
I guess we're going to have to keep them moving because whatever's going on Saturday, you couldn't.
It was tight.
Yes.
It was the tight season.
The food thing, right. Because people that were on South Lake trying to get on board couldn't go. I mean, they sat there towards the lights because everybody that was turning left to get into the junior high had a block. So, and I thought this is only partial of that, Mary.
Yes.
It can be like on Thursday and forward.
Yes, my understanding, they will actually be directing, if I understood.
Right, they will actually.
Directing at both those intersections.
They won't be losing their life.
And it's.
So that would be key. These officers, yeah.
Both of those intersections.
Yep, yeah, those are key. And of course, as you would imagine, it's tough for buses to make those turns anyway, so that's why we just had to kind of get creative. And even though it's a little bit longer way around to go down South Maine, to Middle Ridge, and then back up, it just seemed to, where we can do that, it seemed to make sense. So, and we may adjust, we may get two or three days into it, by the, you know, we got to do something else, or add another route in a certain neighborhood, or, but we'll definitely keep you posted.
And how are we informing the parents that we're doing this?
Pardon me?
How are we informing the parents of this?
We talked the other day, when did we meet, Friday? Now, I don't know if the junior high communication is out yet. I know they were having open house this evening, actually.
It's probably over now.
Yeah, it's probably over by now. But I know Mr. Gibson and Mrs. Newhoff, they were going to be communicating that, I assume, whether it be by email, all-call, but they did indicate as of Friday when we met, that they would be getting that information out. We will double-check that.
First, it should be out everywhere can possibly be out.
Yes.
So I mean, I think it should be on Instagram, I think it should be on Twitter, I think it should be on the app, I think it should be everywhere. Because that way, people will not say, "We did not know because we did not look at," or "We did not get an email."
I would tell you, two hours ago, they posted it on Facebook.
Yeah, I haven't looked at anything. So it's on there, okay.
Yeah.
But I think it's on all of those things.
Yeah, and I know Mr. Gibson was even going to make an all-call this afternoon for open house tonight. You know, just a reminder, Mylan is closed, you may want to consider, you know, coming in, you know, that kind of thing. So, and I will also do, in terms of initial communication, the night before she will start, I'll do another district-wide kind of a general all-call about please allow for extra time and those kinds of things. Specifically, we'll double-check with the junior high.
It's just always, they always say, "We didn't know."
Yeah.
Or we lost the paper.
Anything else for Steve's questions? I think the presence of the police will.
Yes.
Will hopefully maintain calm, people that will think twice before they do something stupid.
The police presence will be a key factor.
It's just, we've dealt with controversy before, we've always been able to do it because everybody seems to come together and figure it out and get it done. You have one or two that don't want to comply, but you know, it is what it is, so we'll be able to.
So we have somebody at Lake where the buses are turning in, so that we don't have people stopping and dropping kids off.
Yes, so, yeah, that was also brought up this morning about even having an officer at right there at the Powers entrance.
Right.
And then it's five different points, so.
Okay, okay.
Good.
Yeah, Mark Cawthon really had a nice PowerPoint presentation and in terms of where they were looking and having officers, and yeah, that did come up. Because people, a lot of times, park across the street.
Yes.
And then walk across.
Kids run through the buses.
Right. And obviously, safety, we instruct our bus drivers that although sometimes people are upset when drivers are late getting kids home, we always tell, first and foremost, take your time, make sure everybody's accounted for, and we get them home safe and sound, even if they are late. You know, that's, safety is the first priority. So yes, they're going to be running late, but we want to make sure we take the time to make sure everybody's accounted for and just working through that process and drivers are being extra cautious.
I assume the Police Department's going to be on board until this Mylan Avenue, until the bridge is fixed.
Yeah, as we get updates on that, we'll keep you posted. Be nice, it's only a week, but then again, it'll be two or three or more.
Okay, your recommendations, Steve? Maybe we'll do it.
Wait.
Never mind.
You gonna let these guys talk?
Go on.
Upstairs, like, wait. Don't forget your ass.
Mike, you're up.
All right. Few quick updates. One, Sherwood's aware of this, but one, just congratulating Emily Marty for winning the 2021 Ohio History Teacher of the Year Award. It was given out by a prof of New York, he'll do a Lerman Institute of American History, they've been doing it for 17 years, I think, and so only one per state. So Emily, our teacher at the high school, was the Ohio winner this year, and she's up for the national one, one of the few will be the national winner. So congratulations to her. Nice article in Comment Telegram a few weeks ago, I think, so, excellent, she's a great choice. Amy mentioned Commons Live a little bit ago with the donation you approved this evening. Just want to mention too, you know, we use some extra funds for Commons Live, the board was so graciously to provide us with that. Also, GPD Group, we heard, our architect, we earned a grant from them as well, about $20,000. So, you know, the idea of Commons Live was delivering, you know, our athletic events, concerts, et cetera, live to the community through YouTube. And of course, Doug's cutting down our technology supplies, we're also, you know, recording that and preserving the history, was a concept, what, a year, a year and a half ago? And it's now fully developed and ready to go with all those donations, with the board's gracious effort also. Equipment is in, similar equipment that we have for Steel News Live, so those students are kind of getting prepared for Steel News Live, and so choose in the future. And we're ready to go. On Thursday, the first day of school, the evening, Doug is having his first parent meeting for the students, which you are approving tonight as well. On the agenda, there are 25 students, 19, I think, are from the junior high, which is really exciting, seven eighth graders, six from the high school. Obviously, the high schoolers have, are in sports, they have jobs, a lot of different things that they're doing. So it's awesome that we can have so many junior high students who are going to be part of the team. They'll be part of the Commons Live team, and starting Thursday, they're going to start getting their schedule of all the events they can cover, they'll help decide what events they are covering, who's covering them. And Doug's going to do a real nice job. He's going to actually be at most of the live events as well because he's going to try to do on-the-job training. You know, again, everyone's live is so busy, it's hard to kind of prepare students or train them ahead of time. So they're going to be an hour before each event, have an hour's worth of training, get up to the event, and then host the event and carry live. So I'm excited about that, the kids are excited. I was actually talking to a student this weekend, we're at a swimming fundraiser, and she's on the list, and she's an eighth grader. And she's just so excited, she's looking to hopefully do Steel News Live in the future, hopefully wanting to go into sports broadcasting, and so she's really excited about that, and it's going to be great. So again, the concept was a year and a half ago, maybe, a year ago, and it's here, it's ready to go. So I'm so excited. Congratulations to Doug and all his team for doing that. Real quick update, we had summer experience the last two weeks, which we usually don't have a summer school program, but because of COVID last year and some of the issues we've had with construction, and just some of the concerns, maybe some parents have been wanting to provide, actually, it was a summer experience program that was available to any Amherst student. Possibly because everyone wanted a summer vacation, we only had 65 students sign up, but that's okay, so we provided that. We had a few people who called after it started saying too, "Hey, I didn't realize what was happening, good intention." And so can my child jump in, join? He said, "Of course, absolutely." We didn't turn anyone away, whether it was just a week or a few days, we wanted to participate. So we had a phenomenal time. Brian Rabisky, a Steel News Live teacher here, was a part of the program. We had kids from first grade all the way through 11th grade. Not many high schoolers, obviously, because it's summer, but a couple of students we had were preparing for algebra and geometry next one at Head Start. So all the students got to prepare kind of and just have fun. It was a great experience, so maybe something we'll continue to do in the future. It was really a great experience for them. And finally, every year, the last three years, we've had returning student registration online, where parents update their medical forms and emergency forms. And we just want to make sure, especially in this climate, that we have all of the correct information we need, because again, safety and health of our students is top priority. So just want to let you know, I checked today, 65% of our students have the forms completed and online ready to go. Last year, I think, we started school at 75%, so I'm pretty confident next two days, as school's right around the corner, probably on Wednesday night, we're going to have a lot of families shut off or the first day of school, so I'm confident we'll have 75%. But the goal is really by the end of the first week, to have about 90%. A lot of help is being done at the open houses. For parents, we have the computer set up, going to do it if they haven't done it. A lot of parents were being asked to do it before they pick up their Chromebook, so I'm pretty confident we'll be there again and have that brand new. Just appreciate all the parents, I know. One more thing to do, hopefully the process, I did five minutes, the process is pretty simple because again, most of the information that's in there is in there, you just have to make sure it's correct and just check off that it is.
It's better to fill them out on the team.
Better than three or four phone cards every year, right? So it really is.
I remember those days.
And really, it feeds them life, so if there's new updates in medication, allergies, something that's been updated over the summer, I mean, that goes right in the system, so every teacher can see it on alert, every look at any child. So it's important, we are very appreciative of parents getting that done, it helps us out a lot, but it helps them too. So I conclude my report.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Thank you. See, sometimes I jump around the desk to make sure the next presenter knows.
It'd be time.
Actually, they're awake and ready to go.
Right. So think twice.
No, you're up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yakovozie. Just a few things, I mean, there's so many things, but a few things I wanted to talk about today. Mike had mentioned the summer experience, and we also had Jolene Arcar, our social worker, involved in that, she was doing some yoga for classrooms and working on just, you know, making sure her kids are in the right mindset coming back, because a lot of the kids that participated in the event were coming back from being online last year. And just wanted to make sure if they were in the right place for coming back in. We're also starting our work with Ohio Guidestone this year. In the past, we've been working with Fire, Land, and Counseling Recovery. This year, we're starting with Ohio Guidestone, and they actually have tables today here at the Steel Open House and at the Junior High Open House, just to, you know, make sure that they've got their information and their service is accessible to our families. And along with that, you may have seen a couple of surveys that have come out. One came out with class lists when they were distributed. That is just coming out from our social workers, just to check in, kind of wanting to know where our families are. So far, she's got over 100 responses already to that. Some people saying, "We're great, thanks for checking in." And some people saying, "No, I could use a contact." And so we're going to be meeting with the Guide Stencers tomorrow. And some people saying, no, I, I could use a, a contact. And so, we're gonna be meeting with the guidance counselors tomorrow, um, to talk over those. There's also a second survey, um, that's going around that is for school supplies and families that are in need of school supplies. We've got, I think she said eighty bags, um, from whichever Baptist church of donated school supplies that just need to be distributed and, and are available for our families. And then today, you'll see on the board agenda, um, we had, with your approval, our, um, special ed department spent the day together today just getting ready for the year and, you know, having meetings just about inclusive practices and what we can do to, um, make sure that we're serving our kids to the best extent possible, and, and there's just a lot of really great things going on. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Our question.
Not for Mike?
It's for both of you.
Oh, okay.
Um, knowing that United Way of Lorraine County has done this fill-the-bus deal, and we have been informed that every school with the exception of two in Lorraine County is getting something. How are you getting that?
How are we?
How are you receiving those, how are you receiving whatever Amber schools are scheming to receive from United Way?
For the, um-
From the fill-the-bus that they did countywide? Because we were informed that Fireland did not participate and one other school did not opt in.
Okay.
So, my question is, how are we getting those supplies for our students that might need them from United Way?
Those are also being filtered through. Um, I believe this was an email that came from Steve.
Just came in Friday, I think, wasn't it?
Right, uh-huh. And, um, that was also sent to our district social worker, um, so that way she knows, she knows where our contact people are so she can get those to send maybe.
Yeah, they are getting stuff. That was a lot I wanted to mention.
Essentially, the email was just asking us, our point of contact.
Right.
Which is our social worker, Jill Myer. So, she, uh, services, you know, kind of makes sure that those make their way to the families that need them.
And did we, this, I have more questions here. With the gas, Aline issue, we talked about last month, the gas pump at the Shell station, it's a new station, whatever station.
Yes.
Did we find out if we were gonna have that pump marked? Is that pump marked so we know that we should buy from that pump? Because it's only one pump there. Is that correct?
Yes, it was my understanding that they were going to mark it. I have not followed up to double check to make sure that that's happened, but I will.
Okay.
And are we gonna advertise that?
As I said, we need to get that out as well. That would be my responsibility. Yeah, that was my understanding, and I haven't stopped to see the pumps marked, so I was just gonna ask what pump is it?
Yes, I'm so used to going to this shell up here, the other shell, and I know it's the one on the bridge. Yes.
The friendships.
Yes, good.
By the Carmona place.
Yes.
What, on the other side of the bridge? No? North side.
Yes.
North side of the bridge.
The north side of the bridge, yes. That's the Maritana.
There's a, there's a, okay.
Okay, oh.
All right, that's the Maritana.
So, local, and there's Shell, little two gas stations out there. It was Maritana, it's now Soboco.
I can't even.
It's not Soboco.
It's just the one across by McNamara.
It's right next to McNamara, yes, right next to it. Your turn. Any further questions, sir?
Not now.
That's in reality, the, the random choosing of the agendas for the bit that this guy.
Uh, just a quick update with the JBS. Um, we're in the process of getting things done. The JBS has decided that we will be one of the schools that you will wear a mask in, okay? So, our students and faculty members will have masks on this will begin the end of the month. It won't begin until after the fair's over. So, um, that was a discussion point that we had, and I'm sure that there will still be discussion about that come, um, this Thursday at the board meeting. But I think that was driven from a couple of the other southern, uh, school districts, okay? Uh, with Oberlin being a, a strong force in that, so it was determined that the students at the JBS will have masks on this year, uh, at the start. Again, subject to change based on what's going to happen there. The other thing is they're getting ready for the celebration, which we talked about, the anniversary. Stay tuned for some more information about that. Um, and then, there's a whole new concept of updating the branding for the JBS. So, more will be released on that as well. Communications Department, we worked hard on that this summer because there's too many stories that aren't all focused in the same direction because of all the different programs. So, other programs tried to focus their own program and make it. So, we're trying to try to streamline that branding so that no matter if it's coming from the, uh, cosmetology department or whether it's coming from the auto mechanics department, it all has the same look to it, so that you know that it's the same deal. It's not its own, even though there are so many different programs, they all are identified with the same look from that perspective. So, stay tuned for more. Any questions for me about the JBS?
So, is everything gonna be open, like tomorrow, like the Buckeye Room and?
I haven't, they haven't made a determination about the Buckeye Room yet, uh, because it, it probably won't open as early if it would because there's been a change in the faculty there.
Right.
Okay, so we will keep you appraised of that because it never usually opens until first of October.
Right.
But as far as I, right now, everything is on, on go as it should be, like, from that perspective. That's all something to change based on the situation at hand, okay?
Any questions, Rex?
Mike, no, we're leaving questions.
You should be asking. You should be asking.
Do you have an opportunity to see the branding? Because I think that's a great idea. Do you have an opportunity to see the branding? It's a premium.
We haven't seen it yet, okay? Um, we haven't seen it. It's being worked on and it's a lot of discussion. It's just a lot of I-own-ness, okay? It is not. The other thing that we spent a lot of time this summer on is the foundation. Because the foundation thinks that they are a separate entity and that they don't report to the Board of Education. So, it's been a, it's been a struggle and a battle and a very experienced for some of those who've been there for a long time. So, um, that will be a topic of discussion also on Thursday. But, you know, they, they always felt that they could do what they wanted to do, and they didn't realize that they didn't have the control that they thought that they had. And then they went, and the only way that this all came about was because some people tried to find out balances who aren't on the list of find out balances because they didn't go to the treasurer to get the balances. They went directly to the, and, uh, to the entity of the community foundation. Of course, the community foundation said, oh, what's the nonsense? Why is this person contacting us to try out, to find out what kind of balances should happen at the end? So, it's, um, always something interesting.
What makes the, the jointification of school, Board of Education, extremely more difficult than what we deal with. We're here to do a number of different school districts. Thirteen different school districts, thirteen different agendas, so to speak, and to try to bring it into one is, it's a tough job, so. Glad you're doing it. Okay, well, now we can go to some recommendations.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Uh, thank you, Mr. Yakobozzi. We do have, uh, as the board can see, a number of personnel recommendations here, and, uh, we, we tried to, we wanted to include as much as we could here. It is always possible, we may need a special meeting, but again, one of the reasons why we try to include so much here is, you know, we're, we're trying to get us, carry us through to the next board meeting in September, but, you know, if need presents itself, we'll, we'll contact you in terms of setting up a, a special meeting. But we think, as of this afternoon, uh, we've got all of our personnel recommendations, uh, taken care of. You see a number of, uh, things there, part-time positions, full-time positions, uh, air professionals, teaching positions, a change in hours, or lunch monitors, uh, part-time to full-time drivers, just, just a host of, of different things. Supplemental contracts, title tutors, student workers, leaving absences, professional development, Sarah had mentioned that earlier. A couple of changes, uh, job description and title, uh, with, with Haiti to kind of correspond with Sarah. Uh, not just about special education, but about student services. And so, it seemed to make sense to, to do the same thing for Haiti. And then, as Mike had mentioned, you know, kind of a couple of unique items here is this whole Comments Live. And we're just really excited about this, and Doug and his team have done a great job, stipends for them, and there are student workers that are gonna be helping them. And again, this is a way to, folks that are not able to come to our events are able to view these, uh, from home. And just a ton of positive feedback on this last year, and we just want to continue to build on that, uh, as, as we move forward. So, with that, we'd like to recommend approval of items eleven A through eleven Q.
Is there a motion?
Someone.
Please, the second. Rex, any discussion? Your call, please.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mrs. Nider?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa? Mr. Yakobozzi?
Hi. Educational recommendations?
Yeah, just a series of service, uh, recommendations, uh, that, again, I know we've had an opportunity to look at those. Uh, very common, uh, for this time of year, we'd like to recommend approval of items twelve A through twelve F.
Is there a motion?
Someone.
Someone.
Any discussion? Your call.
Mrs. Nider?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Yakobozzi?
Hi.
Just recommendations?
Yes, uh, just three items here. Uh, the first one is the bus routes, as I mentioned again with a caveat that we'll be up posted now. Those may change, uh, Doug wanted to mention that, or annual transportation manual. And then, kind of a new grant opportunity, I think, if I remember correctly, just over ten, ten thousand, between ten, eleven thousand dollars that we're able to apply towards some upgrades for the north playground. So, uh, that was kind of a nice opportunity that we haven't had in the past. And with that, we'd like to recommend approval of items thirteen A through thirteen C.
Someone.
Someone.
Discussion? Your call, please.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mrs. Nider?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Yakobozzi?
Hi.
Anything else come to the board?
I just said one thing. I just want to, we live over on Cherry Valley Drive, and every day, the band is playing, and I just want to offer a wonderful, wonderful band concert every night. We just sit outside and we listen to the band. We said, it is, you know, we just get to get some ice cream and just.
Thank you for sharing that, because it actually, yeah, I, I hit, and I'm sure the board as well. This is something that comes up many times where, uh, folks say, Mike, it's so nice to hear the band playing because it starts right around the end of July, first of August, and, uh, we've got a great, great band. The kids do a great job, and Mr. Morbello does a great job. So, thank you for mentioning that, because that is something that comes up quite often, and it's a sure sign that the start of school is right around the corner.
But thank you for the service. We just love it.
Thank you. And, and we do have the contact.
And we just sit out there and drink our, with happy hour, we just.
And we have your contact information so that we're able to follow up.
So, you can come over and listen with happy hour.
Food, please, LaPita.
That would be neat. Ice cream is lovely.
And thank you for being here. It's always nice to have some folks here at our board meetings and-
Well, we just want to try to get involved.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Yeah, I was involved quite a bit with my kids when they were in school here in sports and in band.
Good to see people in the audience.
Yes.
I was a, I was a marching band as well when I was at school here.
Well, thank you for your interest.
Thank you. Okay, uh, two things. One, I want to thank Janet for putting together the agenda. This was a tough agenda.
Yes.
And I know you were having a good time doing it, weren't you? And secondly, secondly, I know I speak for the board, and I say, well, the thing, everybody in the district, the effort they put forth to get us where we are today. What they did last year to make things happen, but without the cooperation of our staff, I'm not talking anywhere from, you know, custodial and maintenance staff all the way to you, okay? Without that cooperation and anticipation and commitment, we never would have pulled off last year what we did. And there were so many people saying, you guys can't do this, but, and we did it. We proved them all wrong, okay? And with, with, I don't believe really with any incident, it was pretty clean, okay? So, we're going this year, same thing. The difference is, no e-campus. It's all in classroom structure. And, and I, I honestly believe, from what I know and what I've seen our people do over the years, it's a no-brainer, okay? They're gonna get it done, and I just want to thank them for doing what they've done to get ready for today. There's been a lot of changes over the summer with personnel, tremendous amount of changes. And I'm, I'm looking forward to a, a good, a good start once we get past the first couple of weeks.
Yes. Once we get all of our roads open.
I urge everyone to stay patient, understand, cooperate, you know, don't be a knucklehead, you know, just do what you gotta do to get it done, and it, it's gonna get done, so. So, with that, uh, I need to entertain motion for adjournment. No, 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 for executive session.
Yes.
I wanna, I wanna ask a question too. I thought of-
Sure.
Um, the homecoming will be before our next board meeting, I think.
The twenty fourth, does that sound?
It is the twenty fourth. Are they planning on having a parade and everything this year?
As far as I know, yes. As, as far as I know, that is in place.
I gotta drop it.
Yes, and I know our Washington DC trips, uh, as of right now, we've checked, most districts are still planning that, going to DC in October. On a, but yes, all, my understanding is all of those kinds of activities and events are, are on a schedule.
Can you make sure that you some include the needs to know that the board will have a-
To the parade.
Absolutely. Flowings again.
It's the same day.
Same day.
It's a parade the same day.
And no, the parade's, no, the parade's normally the day before, isn't it?
It used to be. Versus today.
Homecoming's good, homecoming.
Well, for the last ten years, it's been on Friday.
The homecoming is.
Yes, and then there's a little parade before the game thing.
Yeah, the parade before the game, it's been that way for the last four, five years.
So, the, so the twenty third, I think the twenty fourth.
I will check with Mr. Deliar, and I'll make sure to let him know that the board is interested, uh, whoever the student, I make sure where student council advisor, but make sure that there's a, uh, they, they know the board's interested in it.
And I will not be at that. I'm not excited.
Oh, okay.
The, we'll have candy to throw.
Yeah, we have your bag of candy.
Well, I have a costume.
No, you, you're, just because you're not a beater doesn't mean you don't have candy.
But you still have to buy your candy. You still have to buy your candy.
Oh, we'll just throw it for you.
Make sure your name's on it.
I will. I'll make sure my name's on my name.
And only, and only one person at the table will be throwing it out.
We have a question from the audience.
Yes, um, for the gas station fundraiser, um, would you like the PTOs to advertise as well on their social media? Because we get a lot of parent interaction on our Facebook and things.
Yeah, that's great.
Yes, sure, yeah, once we do that, we'll try, we'll confirm. In fact, maybe I'll just drive over there after our meeting. Just double check, make sure there, you know, we'll follow up on our media, and then obviously, you know, PTO or any other of our support groups, uh, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else? I'm not gonna take a motion to go to executive session to discuss personnel compliance with no action to be taken. Your call, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
It's Mr. Engel.
Email update.
Yes.
Mrs. Nider?
Thank you.
Mr. Yakobozzi?
Hi.